Good evening. It is September 8th at 6 o'clock and I call this Dunwoody City Council meeting to order. Unless I see an objection, seeing no objection, this meeting is called to order. Councilwoman Lotenbacher, can you lead us in the invocation and pledge, please?
Yes, please rise if you are able. At this meeting, help us make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance.
Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm hoping that you all see a recurring theme of continuous officers being added to our roster here. Today, I want to introduce you to Officer Christopher Van Heest. He has joined us from the Alfred Department of Public Safety where he served as a police officer from 2017 to 2025. Prior to that, he was employed as a community supervision officer for Georgia Department of Community Supervision. Christopher holds a bachelor's degree in criminology from the University of West Georgia, and he joined our team on August 19th. So I would like to welcome him aboard, and Mayor, if you will come down and please issue the oath.
Is this on, Jennifer? Okay, raise your right hand, please, and just repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Christopher Van Heest.
Hereby swear or affirm that I will faithfully, fairly, and without malice or partiality.
Hereby swear or affirm that I will faithfully, fairly, and without malice or partiality.
Uphold the laws of the state of Georgia as well as any ordinances which I am authorized to enforce.
Uphold the laws of the state of Georgia as well as any ordinances which I am authorized to enforce.
To the best of my ability and support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Do the best of my ability and support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of Georgia, so help me God.
And the Constitution of Georgia, so help me God.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you very much.
Officer Van Heest, we know that you have lots of choices of where you could work professionally, and we could not be more grateful that you have chosen Dunwoody to be your home. We, as a community, are heavily invested in our police department and the officers and the men and women that work there. And I know that this is absolutely the best department to work for in the country, but, and we hope that you find it so, please let us know if you do not. And you join a team of really dedicated colleagues who keep us safe, who support our community and are here for us, our residents, on a daily basis. And again, we could not be more grateful that you have chosen us to be your home and to your beautiful family. We know that they share you with us, and again, we send our gratitude to your family, and thank you for choosing Dunwoody, and to your colleagues who are here or mostly out on patrol. We, of course, continue to be grateful and appreciative for everything you do on a daily basis. So thank you. A, it is time for public comment. Public comment will be 30 minutes. Each speaker is allowed up to three minutes. While I haven't counted, I suspect I have more cards than time. And so if you want to wave off, you want to stand up and say, I agree with what the last person said, feel free to do so. Make sure you speak into the microphone. And if you could, even though I'll say your name, if you could just briefly say it for our clerk to make sure she heard one of the two of us, the odds are in our favor if we both say it. All right, Sean Reinhardt, if you'll approach the microphone, you will have three minutes.
All right, good evening. Appreciate all the council members. My name is Sean Reinhardt. I'm a vice president and development partner with Dominion. And at the council meeting on August 11th, there were a lot of conversations.
Wait one second, we seem to be having a technical problem. Okay, so, all right, go ahead. Got three minutes, go ahead.
Sounds good. You know, we had a council meeting on August the 11th, and at that meeting, there was a lot of conversation about the Dominion Life South project. And there was conversations and concerns both from council as well as from the community, and we heard you. We know that scale and building height was a big concern for folks, and we want to let the council know that we've listened, we've heard, and we've made a lot of changes. So let me start with some things that haven't changed. Our proposal's still for independent senior housing that is affordable for residents in Dunwoody. It's not assisted living, it's not public housing, and it's not transitional housing. It is still thoughtfully designed housing that will be managed by a national company that has the most experience of any company managing this type of housing, and it will be operated long term. What has changed is the scale. From the beginning of the process, the community feedback that we've received has continuously shifted. At the neighborhood meetings and HOA meetings, there were concerns about schools, about traffic, about parking, about what 55-plus really meant. And at the planning commission, there was acknowledgement for senior housing and the need, but there was a request for a different type of housing. And then there was also conversation about the future comp plan amendment and how we were not fitting the future comp plan and what was in that future comp plan. And then when we came to you all on August the 11th for our first council meeting, I think the conversation shifted again, where the conversation then was a lot about PC3 zoning and building height. So I wanted to just talk about the changes that were made to our application between that August 11th and this evening. Though the application is very much the same, the footprint is very much the same. We reduced the building height from 95 feet down to 67 feet along Ashford Parkway and 56 feet along Ashford Dunwoody Road. That is a two-floor reduction on Ashford Parkway, Ashford Center Parkway, and one-floor reduction on Ashford Dunwoody Road and two floors in some cases. The density was reduced by nearly a quarter of the project from 215 down to 165 units, and there was an impervious cover reduction from 85% down to 70%. So I think these changes really matter. It fits the scale of surrounding uses. It fits the current zoning allowance for up to 70 feet, and it fits the future comp plan amendment and aligns with the vision that Dunwoody set for this corridor.
Thank you. Julie Sellers, approach the microphone, and you'll have three minutes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Julie Sellers, here on behalf of Dominion and the applicant for the zoning before you tonight. Sean walked you through some of the changes that significantly reduces the scale, and that was the comment that we heard from some of you last month.
Hold on one second, I'm sorry.
They heard and they listened. We are hopeful and optimistic that you will vote to approve this application today and want to provide a few additional data points for your consideration. A few things that I wanted to clarify. The PD District does not require multiple parcels to be a PD District. In contrast, your code requires a minimum contiguous land area of 1.5 acres. We satisfy that. That's Section 27-87-1. Both the planning commission and your trained staff have recommended approval of this application. These are the people that the city has hired or appointed to evaluate and make recommendations. Last month, we heard a lot of comparisons to PC2, and I want to just go ahead and point out the fact that PC2 is not located anywhere in the city. There's not a single parcel zoned PC2 because strict compliance with the code provisions is impossible. So the fact that there are no PC2 zoned properties is evidence of the problems with some of the code regulations. But I do want to touch on some comparisons with PC2 district regulations to highlight how this plan does fit within the vision stated for this area. PC2 allows height of 70 feet or five stories. It also allows council to approve more than that. So why, coming before you with the original elevations, we were certainly not doing anything out of character and certainly not doing anything that wasn't allowed by your code. But that height has been considerably reduced. In fact, one corner of the building is basically 35 feet, which is your max for single-family homes. The scale has absolutely been modified. PC2 also allows for max impervious and semi-impervious coverage up to 85%. We are now at 59% or 25% less than what the PC2 district regulations would allow. There is no mixture of uses required in PC2, and I think it's important to note that the multi-unit housing is allowed by right in PC2 if owner occupied. So we are at a rental issue here today. The rental is what would require a special use permit, and we cannot change the fact that Dominion does construct a rental product. I do want to note a few key points that in the current zoned O-N-I district, you could have a person, excuse me, a company providing drug and alcohol rehabilitation in a 70-foot building and people living at this property. That's allowed by right and would not comply with the comp plan's focus on providing additional senior housing. Thank you, and we appreciate your consideration and hope for your support.
Thank you. Are we okay, Sharon? Okay. Brett Swider, you'll have three minutes, sir. Counsel?
Good evening. Brett Swider, property owner, 4828 Ashford Dunwoody Road, 1535 Mount Vernon Road, 1742 Mount Vernon Road. This is in regards to actually, on August 25th, the city council read yet another amendment to text related to zoning and ordinance governing recovery communities. I'm now sure that this council is aware of multiple federal lawsuits as well as a HUD complaint filed. If you're not, I would suggest getting with council because the city has accepted service on these. In the last meeting of city council that I attended, Paul Reinhardt met with me outside in the hallway of this building with an ex-city council member and a witness. Both are in this room right now and lied to me. He intentionally misled me and my organization in an effort to convince us to stop fighting this discriminatory regulation. The city has been made aware of this, and my question is, how does he still have a job? How is somebody still in a position of authority in this city? Why would any member of this community trust a word that comes out of this city council's mouth after knowing this? It's a legal court document, you can look it up. Does nothing, nothing changes. I would also like to fact, I would like to address the fact that changing the regulation to be compliant with ADA and fair housing sounds like admission that you were not compliant prior. To me, this sounds like the city got caught with their hand in the cookie jar and are now trying to add verbiage to avoid prosecution or persecution, sorry. I don't know when this ends. This is two years we've been going on. It's now has done disruption to our businesses and our community. And at this point, I wouldn't be surprised that there's more lawsuits coming, right? We're not the only ones affected by this. I understand it's a small population, but it is a protected class. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Thurman Green. Approach the microphone, sir, and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Thurman Green with DeKalb County School District. Wanted to discuss a program that we're launching this fall, which is called our Principal of the Day Program. With this, this is an opportunity for us to open to senior level and corporate executives as well as city council leaders, civic leaders, in order to be able to come into our schools and actually for a day or for half a day, a few hours, to really get an opportunity to see what the life of a principal within our 138 schools and centers is like in DeKalb County. The overall purpose of this is for, at the end of this, which this program will take place over November 10th through the 21st. The purpose of this is, by the time that these visits are taking place, the school will actually have a new partner or a partner who has actually been able to strengthen the relationships with that school. This also helps to break down the barriers between the education system as well as the community. So with this, we really wanted to invite individuals into our schools, into our spaces, so that they can walk through the shoes of our principals. With the activities that'll take place on a given day that you, as well as that principal, will discuss, you will not be alone. So this will be an opportunity to really walk side by side educators and really get a better understanding of what's going on in our classrooms, and also what resources and opportunities can be leveraged for the benefit of our students to help strengthen overall education for DeKalb County School District. I did bring a couple flyers, so if it's possible, I could leave that for y'all to look at at a later date, but I thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Mr. Vennike, if you could grab those flyers, please. And I'm sure some of us will be in touch. Thank you very much, Mr. Green, for coming today. Cheryl Strickland, if you'll approach the microphone, and you'll have three minutes, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Cheryl Strickland, and my husband and I have been homeowners in Dunwoody for almost 30 years. We are happy with many of the changes that have increased our city's vibrancy while enjoying our home in the Ashford Chase subdivision, which is now known as the Transitional Ashford Center area. Please note that I am absolutely not anti-affordable housing. I am not anti-affordable housing. The focus of my 40-plus career has been on financing commercial real estate and economic development projects. And given the nationwide need for more affordable housing, my recent years have focused exclusively on affordable housing finance, including affordable senior projects. But my concerns regarding the Dominion Project Department specifically are not what, but rather where and how. First, where. In Dunwoody, and especially District 1, apartments should be closer to the concentration of amenities in each city. That means closer to the mall, the hospital sector, and MARTA. These are areas appropriate for more density. During the 2025 CDP process, many residents asked that no more apartments be added to the Transitional Ashford Center area. We have plenty already and far more than when my husband and I purchased our nearby single-family home. Of course, that was before cityhood in 1996. Next, how. Dominion representatives have stated that independent senior projects don't need much onsite staffing. My experience actually suggests otherwise. Living a relatively isolated existence among isolated seniors creates a need for more interaction, not less. An affordable independent senior project ideally includes responsive onsite property management along with a robust program of onsite resident services fostering a healthy and engaged senior community. Otherwise, extreme social isolation and dysfunction too often occurs. Services may include weekly fitness and wellness classes, community gardening, regular organized social gatherings, as well as local transportation to shopping and doctor's appointments. Successful, affordable senior projects, independent, yes, but they still value these supplemental services. I personally worked on deals that provided these services as part of the developer's business model. It appears that this developer does not. Finally, a search on Dominion Management Services elicits a concerning number of complaints about property management posted to various sites, including the Better Business Bureau and Yelp. In closing, we only have a limited number of redevelopment opportunities in Dunwoody. I believe we can do better. I believe we should wait until the right opportunities show up and do better. Thank you so very much. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. The clock keeps, so the clock doesn't stop for those 30 minutes, so just keep that in mind. Ashley Potts. Approach the microphone, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, good evening, City Council. My name is Ashley Potts. I live at 1175 Oak Trail Court. I'm a little nervous, but I'm here to again speak out against the request for rezoning the Life South property. First, I want to note that some, including the developer, have made comments that would have us all feel that if you object to this rezoning request, you don't want affordable senior living at all. You don't want our retired teachers, police officers, firefighters to have a home here. That's a false narrative. Many, myself included, fully support affordable senior housing and recognize that Dunwoody does have a need for such. The developer would also have us believe they're being great partners to the city, filling an as-yet unmet need and making concessions based on objections aired at prior meetings. But Dominion is a business, and this is a revenue opportunity for them. Yes, the original proposal has been scaled back in units and the height has been decreased. From the June Planning Commission meeting to the July DHA meeting, it went from being a home for out-of-town residents like my aging parents to being filled with our neighbors. But no amount of revision can make this square peg fit into a 3.4-acre round hole. All that said, my critical issue here is timing. We've spent innumerable hours developing and refining the comprehensive plan for its future. Input sessions, wild discussions on Facebook, public comment. So much time, passion, and effort has been dedicated to creating a cohesive vision for our city. I ask you, in what way is Dunwoody better off for rushing a vote on a high conflict development in a transitional area on the eve of finalizing our comprehensive plan? It makes no sense. Why did we spend all the time and money in the first place? Let's get the new plan fully adopted and then discuss the merits of this project. That is the sensible approach. Dominion stated in June that a deferral of the Planning Commission vote to the July meeting would mean that the project was dead. Luckily for them, they were able to ensure inclusion on tonight's agenda, as they have a hard deadline in October. Thankfully, their deadline does not have to be our deadline. I have two kids, and we have a rule when they're bothering, "Mom, I've got to have a playdate. Mom, I've got to have a sleepover." I say to them, "If you need an immediate answer, it is no. Good decisions aren't rushed." Thank you.
Juan Lago, approach the microphone, sir, and you'll have three minutes.
Yeah, Juan Lago, I live in 1456 East Ham Run Drive. I am at the end of Ashford Center Parkway, and I can tell you wholeheartedly that I don't think I have a single neighbor near me that I've talked to that wants this project where it is. So that's the first, I think, the finding thing that you should look at as representative of city council. The memos that are coming to you sort of seem to indicate that there isn't that much opposition. I can tell you that I was at the Planning Commission meeting back about a month or so ago where one of the members pretty well dismissed the opposition of the Dunwoody Homeowners Association to this project. He counted members, said 3% of the population, that's inconsequential, and dismissed it. I lived in the area long enough to know that Dunwoody HOA has been very influential in the city and the things that happen in the city, and that was sort of a short answer. So I'm going to leave it at that. A lot of what I wanted to say has been covered already. I agree that this is a square peg in a round hole, and the revised proposal that I have here has just shaved a little bit off of the edges, and now we have a hexagon in a round hole, which is no improvement. So I really request that you all deny this project as it is, and if it's going to come back, it should come back somewhere else and different. The other thing I want to mention in the memo from Madeline Smith that's in here, she's still saying height of 67 feet and six stories. I just don't know how they got rid of 30 feet with six stories, or is it six stories or five stories? Or what the heck are we approving here? Or are they asking to have approved? That's one of the things I think should be clarified, and I also reiterate that I can't see why you would have a 2020-2040 plan and a 2025-2045 plan about to be approved. And now we're looking at a project that's not compliant with anything in there. So it's asking for not only a zoning change, but a change to a HUD. That means that we don't know what the heck they're going to end up doing, except for what we have an outline of. We need more certainty, and we need it in a better place. Thank you.
Ali. Go ahead. You have three minutes, sir.
Hello, City Council. Thank you for having me today. I actually wanted to continue a narrative that I started a while back ago on the Raising Canes. I'm not sure if I'll be able to make it tomorrow. I'm honestly very disappointed at how the planning commission seems to be kind of dragging this on for quite a while. I mean, I understand there's certain things that, there's certain things that have to happen, of course, you know, you can't just flick our thumbs and get things done, but my biggest concern here is it seems to be a project with overwhelmingly large amount of support, except for the hotel there that, you know, is worried about the traffic and flow. But for something like this, it just, it seems to be dragging on over and over and over. I mean, since the first public meetings and whatnot, and ultimately, I am concerned it's the planning commission. I understand it's an advisory board. They will give a recommendation to you, but with everyone coming in and speaking so favorably of this project, the biggest concern is that we might start becoming difficult to do business with. I'd hate it for other businesses like a Raising Canes to look in and say, "Oh, my gosh, they took what was a terrible building, a great situation, and it took them months," and all these lawyers come in over and over and over again to try to get something done with all this support. So I'd hate for that to happen. So my polite request here is, when it comes to at least that specific project, that maybe if the city council can, maybe just kind of move forward with a decision based on public comments and kind of the net benefit. I mean, we voted you because we trusted you to make the best decision here. So I would hope that you guys could maybe look at potentially kind of overriding that or streamlining that a little forward versus the continuous dragging on with this just because of the negative effects it could reach for other businesses in the event that Dunwoody starts picking up a bad reputation for being difficult to do business with. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Kramer, approach the microphone, and you'll have three minutes.
Elizabeth Kramer, 1202 Winding Branch Circle. I am here to speak out against the redevelopment on the Life South building. As I stated earlier, I won't restate all of that. You all were here. But the significant changes, they even said the word significant changes. They continue to change to kind of fit it in where it is. We've said, "Hey, we want elderly housing, especially affordable." I'm probably one of the only people here whose parents could probably get qualified to go there. I don't qualify. But anyways, but they've made significant changes to the height, to the egress of the parking structure. That has changed. But what hasn't changed is also the height in the back. That is a fire hazard, and that will become our problem if there is an issue there at any point in time with a fire. That will become the problem of the city, and it will cost us all gravely, not only in life potentially, but also if anybody were to sue, because we allowed the property be built the way it's being built. And there will not, there will be limited access for fire in the back of that building. So that's what I would have you take a look at.
Thank you. Preston Willard, approach the microphone, sir, and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. Preston Willard on the Take Five Oil Change franchisee. Just wanted to thank Mayor and Council for y'all's consideration for our project here in Dunwoody. Again, we're teammate-focused company. We promote from within. We're happy and proud of the culture that we've built there. We're excited for the potential to get involved in the community, just as we've done in other communities. And while our use isn't everyone's first choice for that area, understandably, I do think it's a good fit. We're a modern take on a needed service that's not really available right now. So I think it's an overall net positive for everyone here in Dunwoody. And it's a difficult property to be on. It's very small, so the number of uses that could actually go there are going to be very limited. We're willing to make the heavy investment to do right by that property, and I think we'd be a great added benefit. So I'm happy to answer any questions if that's appropriate. And again, thank you. So I'm happy to answer any questions if that's appropriate. Um, and again, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Ed, I'm so gonna not get your name right. Drysback, maybe? Drysback? I think it's a D. Approach the microphone, sir, and you'll have three minutes.
My name's Ed Drysback. I live at eleven thirty-two Velvet Square. I have a forty-year history in land development projects all over the city of Atlanta and various other counties and cities. I had the pleasure of working with Dominion for two years on a project in Canton, Georgia. And I just want to say they're an outstanding development company. If you allow them to proceed with this development, you're gonna get a quality project. You're gonna get a project where they are going to own it and manage it for the long term. The units will be very well maintained. The landscaping will be maintained. And another thing I'd like to point out, they're a great corporate citizen. They have foundations where they contribute to nonprofit organizations to help, um, critical housing needs within the communities in which they reside. And I just want to speak to the credibility of a company that I've had the pleasure of working with. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Bridgette. I think it's Pavanca?
Pavanca.
Pavanca.
Yes.
Missed the A. Um, if you'll, approach the microphone. You'll have three minutes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Bridgette Pavanca. I'm in the Ashford Chase subdivision at four-six-nine-two Ashford Club Drive. Um, I really would just like to echo what my neighbor, um, in Ashford Chase said, as well as, um, other neighbors this evening. I think it's very concerning that before an overall plan has been adopted, there seems to be this push and this rush for this project, and I think, um, I speak for my neighbors in our community and, and most everyone I talk to in Dunwoody um, about the concern of why, why the push and what's really in it for, um, the larger community. I agree that, and I want to be very clear about not calling it elderly housing or senior housing. Um, if my parents were in need of something like that, I would be, you know, understandably, we do need those things, but this is, this is not that. Um, and one of the biggest impacts I think it will have on the residents, particularly on this transitional area, is the traffic. So we are on Valley View. Um, we are, our subdivision is off of Valley View, and we already experienced very long wait times and problems at this light. There's confusion because there's not a turn lane. Um, I'm sure some of the officers see that, um, regularly, or those in City Hall. Going up, uh, Ashford Dunwoody toward Mount Vernon is consistently congested, especially at certain points of time. And, um, the other point I would like to make is just the community character. We have seen in the last fourteen years since I've been here, Ashford Dunwoody corridor just become overly congested. I'm just gonna say it. I think it's ugly. When we moved here, it was very green, office parks, really pretty, and we've now got everything on the road, uh, right up against the street. Um, it's lost a lot of its character. This is your chance. We are the community. We are the homeowners. We desire our community to be livable, green, walkable, appealing. Every time we give something away, it's at a price to us. The developer does not have us in their interest. You all do. And that's what I'm really here tonight to ask for, is your consideration. Thank you.
Brett Friedman, approach the microphone, and if you take all three minutes, you will, based on my clock, you'll be it for the evening.
Who else still wants to speak? Anyone still wanna speak?
Go ahead, please.
All right, so I find it fascinating because two years ago I was here because I wanted to make a minor, maybe a bigger improvement to my backyard, and I was fought by our city um, employees who don't live in Dunwoody, but I wanted to extend my backyard and put a retaining wall. And time after time, I was just denied. They wouldn't help. They weren't helpful for the process. They wouldn't really talk to me about it. I had to present my case, and then they would talk to me about it. Meanwhile, I find out that Dominion, a corporate entity, wants to come into Dunwoody, and Madeline wants to change all the rules so that they can do whatever they want, rezone it, redo everything, so that what it looks like most of Dunwoody doesn't want, we can now fit this square peg into this round hole, and I just found it fascinating. And then on top of that, looking at kind of, there was a traffic analysis that the city's using that was paid for by Dominion, is a medical doctor, or if it honest, like he who pays for the study usually gets the, gets the results that they want, or they will find someone else to do the study. So the fact that they paid for the study and weren't using it, that just seems incompetent. And Madeline's fine with it. Oh, it's gonna be equal traffic? Are you kidding me? Life Center, or what, I've never really seen anyone ever leave that center, yet they're gonna say it's equal. Now we have a hundred and fifty-four complexes? Are you kidding me? What is, what are we thinking as a city and our employees? Like, I know they try really hard for Dunwoody. Just because you don't live in Dunwoody does not mean that you don't have the ability to kind of empathize and want what the people want, but it seems like whatever the push for Dominion, she's working more for Dominion than she's working for us. And that's a big problem that I have and a lot of our community has. So we need to go back and reevaluate what we are paying. How many hours, how much money have we spent as a city to pay for a corporate entity to do research and to change our rules so that they can come in when we don't even want them here? And I saw them snickering when we talked about, "Dunwoody is like hard." Thank you. And we mentioned that Dunwoody-
Thank you, thank you.
Am I done?
Yeah, the time is done. The thirty minutes is done. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Uh, whenever you're ready, Sharon, to read the next, uh, oh, no, Eric, it's you. Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Mike. It's working now. Okay, so we have the, uh, City Manager Report, including for the week of September eighth through that timeframe. Uh, Parks, Waterford Park received their free little library, uh, by Troop Number nineteen nineteen that was installed. As y'all know, we have the little libraries all over the city. There's one in the parking lot here at City Hall and throughout the city. I believe that's on our maps as well to show you where those are. We also had our, um, on the fourth of September, had Broadway at Brook Run Park by Cowan Wald Concert, very popular event, well-attended. Um, and I appreciate all those who could come out to see that. We also have on the September twenty-ninth, Two Bridges Park Splash Pad will close for the season. Um, seems like it just opened the other day, but of course, the summer is now gone. October eleventh, Groovin' on the Green is the final series for that, and then we have our October thirtieth Trunk or Treat at Brook Run Park. Um, please come to that event. It's always a great family-oriented event for the kids to, um, interact with our, um, public officials and our public safety people. The, um, our final approval for our first non-verbal communication board for Brook Run Park Playground was submitted. There's a picture of that within your report. The report, of course, for those in the audience is available online, um, that y'all can take a look at as well, and has live links in that report. We've installed our first aid kits at Waterford Park and Georgetown Park Playgrounds. There are more that are coming later at, for Windward Hollow, Wildcat Park, and the Nature Center Playground. Stage Door Theater, main, uh, stage production of Orange saw five-hundred-and-fifteen attendees. We had our August Groovin' on the Green, had twenty-four-hundred attendees. That was our largest one of the year. And then the Dunwoody Nature Center welcomed over eleven-hundred campers to the nature camps for the summer. Um, and the police, on August the fourteenth, we hosted Dunwoody's National Night Out at Parneshaw Park. We also have our Sixteenth Police Academy, which is in full swing as we speak. Um, for the thirteenth of this month, we're gonna have our Bike Rodeo at Brook Run Park from eight AM to eleven AM. And we have Coffee with a Cop on September the sixteenth from eight AM to ten AM at the Starbucks, Bucks Inside Target. Um, we have our Walk to School Wednesday on September the twenty-fourth at six forty-five at Kingsley Elementary School. And we have Pizza with Police on October the ninth from six to eight on the Great Lawn at Brook Run Park. Some data comparisons, there's a link in the report that gives the crime stats comparison report from, uh, twenty-four through twenty-five through July of this year. We have under Public Works, the, uh, construction began on the Kellogg Springs Drive String Bank Stabilization Project. Also, the city contractors completed construction of the Stormwater System for the Dunwoody Nature Center Wildcat Learning Center. There's a picture showing some construction activity within the report there. Uh, we also began our construction of crosswalk improvements on Roberts Drive at Wildcat Park, Shamenly Dunwoody Road, at Kings Drive Road, and Peeler Road at Charing Lane. Those are much-needed improvements to help pedestrian safety. Communications, um, we're planning for the Holiday HQ coming up this season. We're also, uh, you'll see some flyers out there for promoting the Bike Rodeo, which I mentioned earlier, September thirteenth. We do have our Dunwoody One-O-One class on September the thirtieth. I got word today that there, you know, there are about twenty-five spots in that program. Based on the size of the bus, we had forty-seven applicants this time. So it's, um, we're gonna try to come up with a system to work more people into that program on the next go-around. But, uh, we are limited to the one trolley, um, at a time. We also have the, um, August twenty-five data is within the Dunwoody Stories, August twenty-five, so you can go back and look at our communications, all within that one link for the month. Um, Community Development, we have our Household Hazardous Waste Recyclant Event on September thirteenth. Um, that is by reservation only. That event here again is booked out. We have a, um, on a private side, we have a new Lego store opened in Perimeter Mall, August the twenty-eighth. That was exciting to have that here. Um, Data, we have the Building Division completed three-hundred-and-thirty-nine inspections last month. Code Enforcement conducted thirty-eight inspections, including nine vacant properties. We received forty-two new complaints, and we brought twenty-four cases into compliance. Code Enforcement also removed sixty-two signs that were illegal in the right-of-way, and, um, the staff, the staff issued twenty-eight Code Enforcement warnings and one citation. So here again, a very busy department on trying to keep things in compliance as, just for the public, so they know Code Enforcement is a, um, we try to be proactive when we can, but we also, we mainly work on complaint-driven issues. So if you ever have an issue, please email us or call the office, and we'll be glad to send Code Enforcement out to take a look at the, um, at the issue. Economic Development, we're still working with the Dunwoody Art Commission and Parks Department to finalize plans for a temporary sculpture, uh, temporary sculpture exhibit to be hosted at Wildcat Park. Also, we had, um, we had the Urban Land Institute here for a two-day technical assistance panel focused on the Dunwoody Village. We'll have a final report on that this fall. And we also hosted the Access Georgia Foundation for the Twenty-Twenty-Five Investor Showcase, providing seven founders the opportunity to pitch their company to prospective investors. So Economic Development's been very busy on trying to continue, um, Dunwoody's success. Under Finance, we do have our new, um, fiscal year twenty-twenty-six proposed operating and capital budget was published on the city's website Wednesday, August the twenty-seventh. The current schedule is for a twenty-twenty-six budget workshop to be held Monday, September the twenty-ninth, followed by the first public hearing on Tuesday, October fourteenth, and a second public hearing on Monday, October twenty-seventh. So that is upcoming within the Finance Department. We also submitted for a Girma Safety Grant application requesting twenty thousand dollars for protective equipment. Under Municipal Court, we had, uh, we disposed of three-hundred-and-nineteen cases, and thirty-two cases were reset last month. Um, the city, under Human Resources, filled one police officer, one detective, uh, one police service representative, and one financial analyst position in the last month. So that concludes the report. I'm glad to answer any questions. Majority of the staff is here to answer questions as well.
Yeah, questions? John?
Eric, uh, thank you for the report. I looked at your link regarding the, uh, crime stats through the Police Department. Very little information. It's just a link. So I went to it and I reviewed eighteen months of crime stats. Um, in those eighteen months, um, everything's down. All crime seems to be down. Our calls for services down. Our arrests are down. Our incidents, our citations, our community events are way up. That being said, we're probably doing something right, so kudos. And I know we put a lot of money into technology. And I know that, uh, I was here when Chief Grogan started the department. He said, "We really don't stop crime. We just move it around. We make it uncomfortable for criminals to come to Dunwoody." Um, I don't think we've had a briefing lately on our police services, our crime stats, what we're doing, um, our staffing. I'm guessing we're pretty close to being fully staffed, so if we could get a, uh, a briefing at some point, just thank you, Chief. At some point in the future, just a full briefing on crime stats, what we're doing, the pros, the cons, what, what are we doing right, and what do we need help with? It'd be appreciated. Thank you.
Glad to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe?
Uh, I've got a question then, something, Eric. You mentioned the Dunwoody One-O-One. Just can you level set for the audience what that is for? Just let folks know that. Might not have heard about it.
Glad to do it. Um, last, in the spring this year, we started a new program, um, to educate the public more on what the city does as far as from, everything from daily operations to long-term goals. And part of that, um, is a, it's a one-day class where we, you start here in this room, actually this room right here, and we brief the citizenry on some of the various departments within the city, and then we go on a trolley tour to show you, uh, some of our parks, some of the developments that are occurring within the city to show people what I sometimes call the other, the other Dunwoody, or the newer areas. And when I say they're newer areas, they're older areas that have been redeveloped. You know, the perimeter area has a lot of things going on, you know, just south of where we sit. We have the new High Street Development. We have the State Farm Complex. If you haven't been up close to those facilities, it's very impressive to see those. That's part of what this tour does. It gives you a deeper dive into the operations of the city. And then we come back here, we take a look at our Real-Time Crime Center, which is some of the stuff, uh, Councilman Henigan just mentioned, some of the, uh, neat things that the Police Department, that they do. And also you get a, a look at the court system and see how the operations are. So it's really a way that we want to show people, um, what we do. And here again, the reason it's limited is because of the trolley itself, the bus that we use, it limits the number of people, and we, we wanted it to be something that, um, not only do you build a rapport with staff, but also with some of your neighbors that are on there. And, um, we do want to shift also as we go on in time, keep the One-O-One, but also have what I call some Two-O-One classes, perhaps on zoning and things of that nature. Right now, we do kind of an advanced class with the Citizen Police Academy, which is a multiple-week course. This is a one-day sampler, and that's what we look at.
Thanks, Eric. Um, and I've got it just to, again, I appreciate the consolidated monthly report. It's one-stop shop. It's on website. You can go to City Manager there and find it and look at, look this up. Uh, as far as transparency and public safety goes, kind of a little bit leveraging what, uh, John said, Councilman Henigan. We have a, a road safety action plan, and there's a staff committee. It's called the Road Safety Committee. It's, it's a staff-led, behind-the-scenes, a working group, uh, with Public Works, Planning Police, and so on, looking at incidents moving forward. Um, I know that the, the person we had temporarily hired with the one-time federal funding has, has left. I would be curious if you would entertain either, um, maybe once a quarter, not every month, putting their activities, but maybe say every quarter, summarizing what their activities have been and maybe incorporating it in your monthly report. That would be question ask one or number one. And the number two is, um, Jonathan did provide, uh, updates to councils, I think it was once a year, maybe twice. And I would just love, appreciate that continuing, uh, whoever the lead rep would be on staff to brief that to council as, as needed for updates.
Okay, sure. Sounds good. Thank you, sir.
Anybody down there? I can't see, I can't see. Okay. Um, can we talk a little bit about paving and the current season we're in? Do you want Michael to come?
Yeah, it's Michael, Michael Smith, our Public Works Director.
Is he here?
He's here. Yes. And, uh, Mayor, as Michael comes up, yes, we, um, we have some information to share on our paving progress and some of the, um, punchless items we're currently working on.
Go ahead. Thank you, Michael.
Uh, do you have a specific question or?
Yeah, it seems like we've had a few more challenges this year than previously. Um, I think it would help if you start by going up, going over where we are in the process, so people see streets that the paving crews have left.
Right.
But they aren't, there's issues. So where are we in the process?
So all the paving for this year has been placed, um, but they still have to, they're still doing some cleanup. They were doing some cleanup today. They still have manhole adjustments. They still have manhole adjustments to do on some of the more recent streets paved. At least one of the streets or two streets, I think, have speed humps to be put back. And then in Dunwoody North, there were some, there's some issues with some of the pavement they put down that they're going to have to come back and, and replace. Not, not all the way down to the dirt like they, when they originally did it, but the top, top layer, they'll have to come in and mill some of those areas and replace the pavement at their cost.
And what about the cleanup of where they recently finished pavement like the? No, 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 like the stuff left behind, the?
Yeah, they were out doing cleanup today.
Okay.
And, and some of the streets they paved the last couple of weeks. And they're, they're expected to be back in two to three weeks to work on the corrective work in Dunwoody North.
And we're still working with the neighbors on Saffron?
Yes.
And we don't pay for the corrective work, correct?
Right.
Okay. All right. They're accountable, correct?
Yes, yes. And they have, there's a one-year warranty on all the paving. So, I mean, we know about the, some issues now, but if there's anything that happens, which is, you know, typically does not. But if, if anything comes up in the first year, that's under warranty too.
And that warranty, go, if somebody buys the company, for example, maybe they're on the market, the warranty follows the work. Okay. All right. Anybody else have questions for Michael while he's here? Go ahead.
I just want to appreciate the Tilly Mill that's been the restriping, but also adding the little reflectors in the middle and along the sides. I think that's great for safety and people stay know where it is and it might even be a little bit of traffic calming. So thank you for the little attention to detail there.
John?
Going Dunwoody North, I'm getting people reaching out to me almost weekly. When is this going to be fixed? Are you aware of this issue? They send me photos and I'm like, when are we going to tell the community that yes, there's issues? Yes, we're fixing them. Because again, it seems like it's a pretty regular basis that we're getting notified on the, the same issues over and over again. I'm trying to tell each individual, we got it, we're going to take care of it. But it doesn't seem like we're communicating that there was an issue.
Yeah, I, I believe there was something, there's something on the website, I think, about doing repairs in Dunwoody North. There may have been something in the digest last week, I'm not sure. But I mean, I know the neighborhood has a, a good communication loop that we could put something through those channels too.
That would be great. If the city could somehow take a few photos, show a few address numbers that we are going to be working in this area based on the quality control issues that have been identified, that are going to be reworked in three weeks, you said. Give us a, some semi timeline, just so we can expect when to see the corrective actions in place.
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, Catherine?
Michael, I want to say thank you for repairing the pothole on Dunwoody Club. I submitted it through C Click Fix, maybe twice, but I'm glad that it is done. For those of you who don't know, C Click Fix is the app on which you are best able to get your problems addressed by the city. Thank you.
Okay, one more thing because she reminded me. The pothole on? The Tillian, that they said they were going to pave the summer and I know technically summer is not, so the Georgia D, have you heard anything?
Georgia DRT, the last time I talked to the district engineer, he said they had bid it out, but they didn't have a contract yet. And he would let me know when they do, but I can reach out again.
And also I really, really, really think there's an underlying water issue there and just paving it is not going to solve it. So if you could ask them to please, they come in and they patch it and then the patching consistently sinks. So, and I wouldn't remember except that Catherine saw that until I drive over and hit it again. All right, which I do pretty frequently. All right. Thank you, Michael. If you'll just reach out to them. Thank you. Okay, now I can turn the page on the agenda. Now Sharon.
In order to allow a drive-through restaurant at Lot Parcel 18349-05002, in consideration of special land use permit case SLUP 25-02 for 125 perimeter center west Dunwoody, Georgia 30338.
Evening Mayor and City Council. The special land use permit before you this evening for a first read is for the construction of a new drive-through restaurant.
Madeline, if you could lean into the microphone and Jay, if you can check to make, I think the volume's been down all night. But go ahead, Madeline, if you'll just lean in in the meantime.
I'm leaning in the microphone, I'm a little, I'm five foot two.
Right, I get it. I really get it.
The subject special land use permit is, the request is at the Ashford Lane Shopping Center, which is the shopping center that has the new green development. And this would be right next door to where the Chipotle and the Sweet Green are in that currently abandoned bank. They have, you know, a, a large development there, over 175,000 square feet of retail space. It was constructed in 2006. They currently have 855 parking spaces on the overall site with 416 spaces in their parking deck. The existing one-story 4,300 square foot bank was a drive-through with a 28-space surface parking lot. There is a large, large stormwater pipe that runs along, underground, along the street frontage, which is why the building is further back from the street. And so the applicant has designed their site plan to account for that. So rather than having asphalt between the building and the street over that stormwater pipe, it's now green space with an outdoor heated patio. They've proposed a new 4,000 square foot restaurant. There would be a double drive-through to the rear of the restaurant. That double drive-through has a stacking capacity of 18 spaces. Based on the applicant's queuing analysis, they are confident that the stacking capacity that they have on site means that the drive-through stacking would not impede or impact circulation around the Ashford Lane Shopping Center. So that is the site plan. One thing that they have done between the planning commission meeting and this first read here at City Council is that they have updated their elevation significantly. So this is the current proposed rendering that they sent to us on August 20th. This is what it looks like from the rear with the drive-through. So this is more of the front from the entrance of the Ashford Lane development. And then I'm just going to give a comparison from the previous rendering to the current rendering. So on the left is what was shown to the planning commission. It had a significant higher percentage of glazing, it had a more articulated roof. The relation of the materials was, was significantly different. And because of this change, you know, we would recommend that the planning commission review this again. This is also something that the applicant would also like to formally request tonight, just to give you guys a little bit of context. They will be requesting deferral back to the planning commission. I am just going to quickly go through some other facts about the development and the special land use, you know, permit approval criteria and such, but just to, to let you all know. Overall, you know, outside of the context of the elevations and the design of the building, we do find that the special land use permit, you know, would be appropriate in this area for the drive-through. It's not located on any, you know, it's not located along Ashford Dunwoody Road. All of the circulation would be internal. It would not have impacts to, you know, outside of the property owner's, you know, property. When we're looking at the special land use permit, we're really looking at, is this going to have impacts within the right of way? Which is, you know, the, where the city, that's the city's property. So any impacts from the drive-through would be contained within the property and would also mostly be contained within the subject applicant's leased area. So we do find that it is, you know, compliant with, you know, the special land use permit approval criteria. But again, because they have made such significant changes to the design of the building, we would recommend that it be revisited by the planning commission. However, if you all wish to proceed with the existing application and approve it, we would recommend the following conditions. That's all I have for you this evening on this one.
All right, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Oh, wait, does the applicant get to present? I'm sorry, sir. I was jumping ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name's Alex Brock with Smith, Campbell, Russell. Office address is 1105 West Peachtree Street, Atlanta, Georgia. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Zaxby's Property LLC, to request deferral back to the October Planning Commission. First of all, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. At the July 8th Planning Commission, we presented a plan in Architectural Designs, received unanimous support for that. After that meeting, issues arose with the 72-inch pipe that, that traverses the property, that staff had pointed out, issues with relocation of the pipe and who would be responsible for that. That led us to revisiting the site design as well as other elements to try to tweak the design. At this point, we just need more time to go back and revisit the site design as well as our elevations, excuse me, to come back with a more significant plan that we can proceed forward with before we go to City Council. So I am more than happy to answer questions tonight, but I don't want to get too far into our design as that may change.
Okay. All right, now I will open, just have a seat and I will open the public hearing. If there are each side either in favor or opposed to this application, we'll have 10 minutes. If anyone would like to speak in favor of this application, approach the microphone. Don't see anybody. If anyone would like to speak in opposition to this application, approach the microphone. I don't, oh, come on.
Attention, the room was for Dominion versus the, the constituents. What I realize is that it's Zaxby's and other friends here with the chicken. But, but I mean, if we approve this, we'll be like the chicken capital of the world. We'll have Zaxby's, we'll have Super Chick, we'll have Chick-fil-A.
Wait, one second, wait.
I apologize. Could I get him to restate his name, please?
Oh, he did, sorry.
Brad Friedman.
Yes, go ahead, Brad.
No, but I, I think this is good, like the more industries we have, the good, the better food we have. Like we might get all type 2 diabetes, but like all these fried chicken options are great for the community. I think that if they want to bring their business in here and people want it, it's good. So let's go for it.
Thank, that's, have a seat. Thank you. All right, I think that was in favor. Would anyone like to speak in opposition? All right, now seeing none, I close the public hearing. I have a question for our attorney. So this is not necessarily an action item, it's the first read, but they're going back to the planning commission. Or that's what they've asked to do. So what, what is the proper procedure here? I should have asked for the meeting, sorry.
Get your planning director up here and let's make sure.
Right, Richard?
Richard, if they have consented to go back to the planning committee, can they even take a vote when it's only on for a public hearing? I don't think so. I think it's got to go through the process, but.
You can't take a vote tonight on it. You'd have to wait till the second read. But you can tell us, yes, you wanted to go back to the planning commission.
Okay. All right, thank you. So we have to put it back on the agenda? Is that what you're saying? Sorry, you shouldn't have left. No, for a second read.
No, you can, because the public hearings tonight, you could force it back to the planning.
Okay, all right, without taking a vote or with taking a vote?
Without your vote.
Okay, okay. All right, I have a question though, if it's okay, before we send it back, which I'm fairly certain we'll send it back to the planning commission. My question is, is I understand that this is Zaxby's application and there's no new curb cuts, is that correct?
That's correct.
But I am confused about how there's room for 18 cars to stack if you cannot find a parking space at lunchtime in that part of Asher Lane. And I don't know that that's even something we can consider. But I, I am skeptical that this will not cause further chaos. And I realize Asher Lane owns the property and they're not here, I don't think. I don't think that the property owner is represented.
In the, in the background that I gave earlier in the meeting, you know, part of our new code rewrite for the perimeter center, part of doing away with things like parking maxima or, excuse me, parking minimums and instituting parking maximums was to encourage shared parking. And this development does have a significant amount of parking, you know, 855 spaces for the development overall and 400 of those in the decked space. And so, you know, we feel that this is, you know, appropriate. We wouldn't want to enforce parking minimums, you know, on a, on a new development because it's not necessarily aligned with the guidance we have from our zoning ordinance.
Okay.
18 cars stacking, you could count them in that drawing. There's 18 in there.
Okay. Just a word of advice, when this comes to council, I'd like to see a representative from the property owner at the meeting, please. All right, all right, so I guess we have to vote to send it to, back to, to planning, to refer it back to planning.
I'd like to make a motion to refer this action, this item for Zaxby's back to the planning commission.
Second?
Moved by John, second by Tom. Any, Rob, sorry, oh my gosh, it's really bad. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. It goes back to the planning commission. Thank you, sir. Next up is consent. This is an action item. I'll take questions or a motion and we can do motion, questions, someone do something.
Motion approved.
Move, move by Tom, second by Stacy. Any questions or discussion on any of the items? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Mayor, moving to business items, action items. Item number 11 is the City of Dunwoody property owner at 4770 North Peachtree.
Sharon, can you speak a little louder? Something is not working with our.
I think it's my throat.
Okay, sorry. Do you want Jay to come read it? Are you okay?
I'll speak, try to speak up. If not, he can come up.
Okay.
I'll start over. The City of Dunwoody property owner at 4770 North Peachtree Road, Dunwoody, Georgia 30338, requested variance from Chapter 16, Section 78, to allow replacement of a City of Dunwoody maintenance facility and associated improvements in the 75-foot stream buffer. CBA 25-16 Allegra.
Thank you. So you all saw this before you last month. And so at that, at that meeting, Councilman Henigan requested an updated analysis of the percentage of green space at Brook Run Park. I have those updated numbers. It's 86% that meets the requirement of the deed restriction for a minimum of 70% of the property to be green space. As a quick reminder, this is the existing maintenance facility. And then this is the new proposed maintenance facility, which will be split into an office building and warehouse building. They're here before you all, or it's here before you all tonight because of the encroachment into the 75-foot stream buffer. The elevations are shown on the left. This is a, a project that was already budgeted for and approved. And this is just the final step in the process of them acquiring the permit and being able to start that work. So staff is recommending approval of it and I'm available for any questions.
Questions, comments, motion? Go ahead.
I'm just going to make the observation that we're creating less impervious surface than we have there presently, which I think is a good thing.
Talk into your microphone, please.
And that we're going to be replanting.
Into your microphone.
Sorry, I'm just making the observation that, that this will result in less impervious surface at the site. And we do have a replanting plan, so I think that the net benefit long-term will be beneficial from this change. And I move to approve.
All right. Moved by Rob, second by Catherine. John has a question.
I just wanted to also point out that the water retention that we are doing on-site is massive. So the amount of stream, impervious stream buffer that we're going into is negated by the water. All the water on-site is kept on-site, cleaned on-site and put back into the stream. So it's. So it's a, it's a net gain across the board from the sense of water quality, so it's, it's a win-win-win. Even though we are impeding the stream a little bit, we're making it better than it ever was. So I also look forward to voting for this, thank you.
Anything else? I call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously, thank you. Sharon, whenever you're ready, take your time.
Item number twelve is an ordinance to amend the City of Dunwoody zoning classification and map of lot parcel eighteen three fifty zero three zero zero three. In consideration of a zoning case, RZ twenty-five dash oh two for forty-five seventy Ashford Dunwoody Road from OI Office Institution District zoning classification to PC one perimeter center district.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. There have been no changes to the rezoning application since the last meeting.
This is not your project. This is not, this is what we're seeing is still the last thing, I think.
Sorry.
Right, am I right?
Let me get the PowerPoint, it's, um.
Sorry.
I have the, the previous PowerPoint slides available if you guys have any questions.
Yeah.
Uh, but again, the, the application has not, um, not changed since the, the last meeting.
Okay, um, any questions or comments? Uh, go ahead, Joe.
Madeline, uh, can you tell me, in the packet itself, I understand the applicant, um, first of all, is zoning dictated by the applicant or is it by the land itself? Just level set me here.
The applicant is allowed to request, um, whatever zoning district, uh, that they would like. Uh, but the ultimate approval of the zoning district is, is at y'all's discretion. And then we review it based on what our guiding policy documents say about that zoning district.
Well, what I mean is, if we zo- we zone land, that's a given right. But it's, it doesn't dictate the actual, uh, you know, operator of that land, as long as they apply, apply to the, as long as they maintain the conditions exist in the zoning, correct?
Yeah, so for this rezoning, it's specifically not tied to a site plan, so they would be separate.
I'm, I'm not mentioning the site plan, it's just the zoning. So, okay, so that, I wanted to make sure that people in the room understand that we zone by the land and not by the proprietor or the business itself, right? So you have to keep that in mind for future and, and what we're doing, if we make changes legally, that's a, that's a contract to the property owner and these LLCs come and go, and all of a sudden it's another LLC and who knows what's going to be there. So when I hear people just say, I just love XYZ, I'm going to be very agnostic and neutral about XYZ. I'm going to be like, what could be there? Given the legality that we permit or deny as a council. So just remember that, and I do appreciate the Dunwoody Homers Association in the late nineteen seventies and the early nineteen eighties that stood up against Georgia DOT in the widening of Ashford Dunwoody. They tried to say two lanes instead of four, there were signs out there. And they said, you know, four bike lanes instead of four lanes and so on, but they were able to save it. They were able to put that median in there, the grass. And if it hadn't been for the DHA, and I thank them, and I thank them today, Ashford Dunwoody looked like Ash would look like Roswell Road in Sandy Springs today. And, and and wherever in the city, it's, we, I'm, I, I'm not, you know, love hate our, our neighbors, but we don't want a Roswell Road in Dunwoody. And, um, regardless of the location of this, um, I know it's, it's, we're not doing the, the drive-through right now, but the site plan. So when I look at the packet and the site plan, it shows me a drive-through on the site plan. Is that legally? Are we approving a site plan if we approve this motion today that's in the packet?
Not with the rezoning, so their original application included a rezoning and then, uh, the special land use permit for the drive-through. The applicant has, um, amended their application to, to separate the drive-through from the rezoning. The reasoning for that is, uh, if you deny a, a zoning application, it, it puts a, a time period where they cannot ask for any changes to the property. The property owner, Limestone Wells, which is different than the drive-through operator asking for the, the drive-through application. Um, they were concerned about having the zoning denied. It's currently OI, which is pretty restrictive. It doesn't allow for restaurants or, or anything like that, like their adjacent neighbors. Um, and so they want to ensure that the rezoning gets approved even if the drive-through does not. So that's why they're now being considered separately.
Right, and, and if I look, their description of PC, it's PC one, correct?
Correct.
So I read in our zoning, PC one description and intent at the very beginning of PC one in our Unicode, anybody can look this up. It's intended to apply to central core area of the perimeter center, including the area directly surrounding the Dunwoody Martis train station. This district allows for the highest intensity of buildings, a high level employment uses, and active ground store uses, and design that supports pedestrian mobility. Now, that's the aspiration, and that's the guidelines that the PC one district has an intent and a vision for. So I, I look at this and I look at the application and I, I, the site plan to me does not meet what I'm, I'm reading for the intent of PC one. So I, I know I'm just one of seven here, but, um, anyway, I, I appreciate your time and I'll leave it. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, Tom.
Uh, yeah, so this, this one's a little understandably confusing because we've seen a site plan, but that's not what we're voting on today. We're, we're, we're just doing the underlying zoning, and I just want to clarify, uh, because i- if we approve this, it's with the attached staff conditions because PC one has certain by right things that go along with it, such as residential. However, that is not included, so, uh, just clarify that if this is rezoned to PC one, any residential use, whether it be owner occupied, um, or rental would need to come before council, is that correct?
Correct, and I've brought up the staff recommendation on screen, just so you all, uh, are able to see it more clearly. That first condition there, we've limited the use of the property to eating and drinking establishments, financial services, food and beverage sales, medical, et cetera. Um, we just gave this sort of a more, um, focused rezoning with very focused uses. Um, the reasoning behind those uses is to give the property owner flexibility to use the site. Um, but in a way where it, it wouldn't, um, generate, um, you know, uh, an excess of development or traffic on that site because it is, um, a smaller site and it's located right along the trail and we don't want a lot of traffic driving uses like drive-throughs along the new Ashford Dunwoody Trail.
Okay, me, um, before, this is an action item, but I have questions, concerns. So I'm not going to vote for a drive-through, I think that's okay for me to say, it's not really listening anyway. But, um, I'm not going to vote for a drive-through on the site. But, and because for many reasons, including the fact that I think Ashford Dunwoody is destined for greater things. And I do not think that we do ourselves a service by approving something with a drive-through and a location. We only get one shot at Ashford Dunwoody. We are not Sandy Springs. We don't have, this is it. I love Shambly Dunwoody Road and I love Dunwoody Village, but this is it. We don't have Pill Hill, we don't have, you know, Sandy Springs has lots of opportunities for commercial, I mean, they go all the way to the river. We don't have that. This is it. This is our one shot and our one chance. This application is too confusing in my mind. And I'm gonna, if everybody else is finished, I'm gonna hand over the gavel so I can make a motion? I think that's okay, right? I don't, uh, wait, Stacy has a question. Okay.
Um, so I just want to make sure that I'm clear what I would be voting for. All we're doing is changing, the vote is to change it from O and I to PC one, and you want us to include these three conditions?
Yes.
Okay, so once we do that with those three conditions, and let's just say that the applicant goes away because they choose another place that has more drive-through capabilities. Do these, does the zoning stay with the property and do the conditions stay with the property?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I had that clear in my mind, thank you.
And are we sure that the property owner, because, is okay with this?
The property owner has asked for the rezoning, um, to be considered separately from the special land use permit.
Right, do they have a representative here tonight? Uh, would you approach the microphone, please? Sorry, not to put you on the spot. And state if you represent Zaxby's or the property owner. I'm raising hands. To Brad's point, we have a lot of chicken. Sorry, go ahead.
Lot of chicken tonight. Uh, Dakota Crowther's ten seventy-five Peachtree Street Northeast, representing Limestone Wells.
Okay.
The property owner.
Okay.
And we are in favor of the rezoning with the three conditions.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, I need a motion, I'm not going to make a motion.
Move to approve.
Move by John.
Second. With, with, what's what was presented, yes, with the three conditions.
Uh, move by John, uh, Tom, second by Tom, any further discussion, hearing none. Um, I call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Me. Thank you. Okay. Whenever you're ready, Sharon. Let us know if your voice is giving out, we'll get some, I can read it accurately. I can read it.
Item number thirteen is an ordinance to amend the City of Dunwoody zoning classification and map of lot, lot parcel number eighteen three sixty-three zero eight zero zero eight. In consideration of a zoning case, RZ twenty-five zero three for forty-eight ninety-one Ashford Dunwoody Road.
Forty-nine.
From OI Office Institution District zoning classification to PD Plan Development District.
And it was forty-nine eighty-one? You said forty-eight ninety-one, I just want to make sure you have it in the record, correct?
Four eight nine one. That's what is in the ordinance caption I'm reading.
Okay, the cap, huh, okay. My caption is different on my printed one. Hold on one second. What is, oh, on the agenda, okay, that's fine, I just, okay.
Yeah, the agenda says forty-nine eighty-one, there's a typo.
It's a typo, it's just a Scrivener's error.
My apologies on the Scrivener's area. Uh, it is forty-eight ninety-one Ashford Dunwoody Road.
Four eight nine one, Madeline.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, so we're correct, I would amend the agenda to make sure the correct address is what you're voting on tonight.
All right, someone want to make an emotion to amend the agenda so the address is correct?
Like to make a motion to amend agenda item number thirteen, uh, thirteen to reflect the correct address of forty-eight ninety-one Ashford Dunwoody Road.
Second.
Move by, uh, Tom, second by John. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I call the question, all in favor of amending the agenda to reflect the correct address, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, thank you.
Um, thank you, my apologies again. So the, um, applicant has updated their application from the last meeting and I just have a slide summarizing those updates. Um, the applicant has reduced their proposed height, and they've reduced the proposed, uh, number of units. They've also made some minor adjustments to the site plan that reduce the overall impervious surface. Their overall development plan has been updated to reflect these changes to the site plan and to the elevations. This is just the updated rendering and the updated elevations. Um, if you have any questions about the changes to the application, I'm available for any questions this evening, thank you.
Move to deny. Second.
Uh, move by, there's a move to deny by Tom, a second by Rob, is there any further, just, oh, yes. I, Councilman Harris, go ahead.
I, I just have a, a couple of comments. Um, one, I, I do have a question, why this wouldn't go back to the Planning Commission, given that there were significant changes? And I looked at the Zaxby's building and that was a whole lot less than what we saw, but regardless, there's a motion on the table. And I guess to the public, the number of emails that I received was saying that we don't want those kind of people in our city was really disheartening to receive. I don't know what those kind of people look like, but I would like to think that we are welcoming to all kind of city. Um, for those of you that don't know, I actually work for the City of Tucker, I work for the Parks and Rec Department, the City of Tucker. I care about the City of Tucker and my, and the citizens that I serve there, just as much as I do. Sometimes I have a debate in my head, which when I probably care about them anymore, not going to lie. But I'm just like, it doesn't matter where our employees live, it is their job, it is my job when I go to Tucker to care just about as, as much about those citizens there as they do here. So also disheartening to hear. Having said that, um, we can do the vote.
Okay, um, just to be clear, so that you, you mean you could amend it to send it back to plan, okay, all right. All right, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I call the question, all in favor of the motion to deny, vote yea. Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes seven oh, and all right, Sharon, whenever you're ready.
Item number fourteen is an ordinance to amend the City of Dunwoody zoning classification and map of lot parcel number eighteen three forty-seven zero one zero one five and eighteen three four seven zero one zero six five. In consideration of zoning case, RZ twenty-five dash oh four for sixty-four sixty-six perimeter center east from OI Office Institution District zoning classification to PD Plan Development District.
Yep, good evening, Mayor, good evening, City Council. Um, this is a second read for this zoning case, um, there's one change from, from the first read with this and this is due to the challenge of working with existing buildings. Um, the initial overall development plan showed balconies, Juliet balconies on one building, uh, regular balconies on another building, the applicant still intends to provide those, but they're not a hundred percent sure if they can. Uh, we have the architect for the applicant, uh, present, if y'all have any questions about this. Um, what they're asking in the meantime is to have a language that makes the applicant, uh, that makes the balconies, uh, optional. So that they can do them if they're able to, but they can also implement the project if they're unable to do balconies. And for the benefit of, um, of the public present, just a
One second, if everyone who's exiting can exit quietly, please, because we have to continue on with our meeting. Feel free to stay, you don't have to leave, we're here for a while. All right, you can go ahead, Paul.
Um, and just, just overview for benefit of the, uh, members of the public present. This is the former State Farm Office Complex down in Perimeter Center East. That's against, uh, Ravinia and two eighty-five, uh, again, fronting on Perimeter Center East. Uh, the applicant's goal here is, um, a rehabilitation project of the two existing buildings. The sixty-four perimeter center east building into condominiums. The sixty-six perimeter center east building into fifty-five plus rental apartments. Uh, existing, uh, additional condominium units, wrapping the parking deck, the existing parking deck on the eastern side of the property. And then townhomes, uh, along the western parking field. That's present there, total number of presidential units, four hundred and forty-one, consisting of those three product types. Um, with this, our recommendation stays the same, it's uh, recommendation of approval, subject to the conditions that are part of your package. And with this, I'm, um, available for, for any questions and the applicant is present also.
Do we need to put that, the balcony, the balcony, is that a condition? Is it in there or do we need to include that?
We updated the condition here, this exhibit C and exhibit B that you see here, those are updated to reflect the, the updated language on the balconies.
I move to approve.
Second.
Y'all fast. Move by Stacy, second by John. Um, I just, uh, before we vote, um, and the applicant's back there, right? Hello, um, if you were at our council meeting, I think two weeks ago, where we talked about zombie office buildings, um, which are office buildings that are empty, some of them were already emptying or empty before the pandemic. They're not coming back as office buildings, and this is a fantastic reuse of buildings. Um, and I'm so excited to see this happen and incredibly grateful that y'all are taking a chance and getting this done for our community because I think it will be the beginning of other such projects as we figure out what to do moving forward with, um, office, um, buildings. So with that, I'll call the question, oh, go ahead, Joe.
Um, I wasn't here at the initial one, but I, I saw the, you know, the tour, I'm so excited about it. And, uh, look, I'm an empty nester without having had a nest, um, like to convince my wife to downsize and I'll go get a cabin up in I'll go get a cabin up in North Georgia. Um, we've approved rezoning before and we've had some great plans before. You guys got to build it. So I hope you're working with the development authority and let me know when you're breaking ground. Um, so I'm excited. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing that? That passes unanimously and thank you all. Oh, whenever you're, I'm sorry, Sharon, whenever you're ready.
An ordinance to allow a drive-through oil change facility at lot parcel number eighteen, three forty-five, ten, zero, two, three. In consideration of special land use permit case SLUP twenty-five dash oh-three for forty-five, fifteen Shambly Dunwoody Road, Dunwoody, Georgia, three oh, three, three, eight, Allegra.
Thank you. Um, so this is the second read for you all tonight. So as a reminder, it's a drive-through oil change facility on Shambly Dunwoody. Um, the reason why it requires a special land use permit is because of the drive-through aspect. So here's the site plan shown on the screen here. They're also requesting two variances. Um, one to, uh, reduce the north side building setback and the other to reduce the north side stacking lane setback. Um, here, the elevation is shown here. There's been no changes since the previous presentation. So, uh, let me know if you have any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Move to deny.
Second.
There's a move to deny. Um, second, um. Any further questions or discussion? I have one. Can, would you accept an amendment to, see if I'm doing this right, Richard, or someone to so that they don't have to wait two years to reapply for the spot, um, to, to deny without prejudice?
Without prejudice.
So we can.
So you'd be adding the denial, but without prejudice.
Right, which means they don't have to wait two years to come back on this piece of property.
Yeah, I think that drops it from two years down to six months.
Right, so it drops it to six months. Well, I'm. I want to amend the motion. So I need, I think I have to make an amendment.
Go ahead and make.
I amma, I am offering an amendment to amend your motion to remove, uh, to, to deny without prejudice so that the time that they can reapply is linked, is shortened to six months.
Second.
Okay. Um, it was moved by me, second by John. Um, any further? Okay, so we had to vote on the amendment. Any further discussion on the amendment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the amendment passes unanimously. So now we're back to the motion to deny.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice. Uh, so is there any further discussion on this? Um, all right, all in favor of the motion to deny, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that was, uh, six to one with Councilman Lotenbacher voting no. All right, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is municipal service rebidding. Jay Veneke.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, uh, first, I'd like to ask a question of Council. We've gone through the presentation twice and I'm prepared to go through it. I can go through it at a very quick clip or through the full one. So I defer to Council's discretion on that.
What? Go ahead, John.
Jay, just give us the high numbers in the sense of the financials and the sense of what are we getting for the money and the, the pros and the cons of why.
I'll go through the quick version of it. Um, if I could have IT pull it up on the screen. Thank you very much. Um, for those that are unfamiliar, cities that start off with incorporation tend to go with a privatized service. And every five years, this city has reviewed its privatized services, all that started off non-public safety. And this year we were rebidding them out again. The main conclusions that came out from it, the first one is bringing twelve positions in-house that are currently contracted. Now, there's different reasons behind it and you kind of have to do a proxy analysis, but around this would save us around three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars for bringing these twelve positions in-house. It's not the same for every position and for some departments, it doesn't make sense at this time. The positions we're bringing in differ by department. In community development, the city engineer, the building official, the senior planner and the planner are considered the professional staff, which are the type that you want with institutional knowledge that help work with your city. The positions that are remaining in community stat, development, but contracted out would be line staff or field staff, which tend to also fluctuate work-wise. The finance department is one that we're finding less and less companies willing to bid on this service with cities. Um, we're down to just a handful of people in that contract currently with our current vendor who informed us that they would not be bidding on it to begin with. So we ended up, when we looked at that, we said it would be better to bring in the three professional positions. A purchasing manager, risk manager and business license specialist in-house. The very bottom of this chart are two administrative positions. The administrative assistant, one is the front desk receptions. That will be the titled if approved on January first, and then the executive assistant, the city manager. These have been part of the finance and administration contract and the finance budget for years. We've put those two positions out to see what we got as far as bids, but neither one of the two bids we received were the type that we would want for this, so it would just be better to bring them in-house. On the public works department, this is one of the fields that we have a, um, we know bringing in-house would be pretty restrictive because of the pay in private sector compared to public on engineering jobs. But these two positions, the administrative assistant too, which actually serves both parks and public works, tends to be the type we'd bring in-house. And the capital projects manager is one of those that we want to start working with, looking at these, and this would be an excellent choice as a, as I call it, a slow step into that. And then we'll get into a little bit on the GIS manager position. And that I want to go deep into the GIS part of it. First, community development. The major thing that everybody needs to know is the change in the way the contract is structured for this next year. Previously, the city has shared its revenue from building license permits with the vendor that provided the services. Uh, staff, we reviewed that actually multiple times over the past couple of years and we determined that it would not, it's more beneficial for us to take in the revenue and contract directly with staff or correct contract directly for positions instead of as we're doing with a revenue sharing. Now, when we look at year-over-year change, the increase is nine percent, nine point three percent. And given the way the contracts were bid in twenty twenty, this is actually below what we thought it would be. Next up, finance and administration. Already talked briefly about that, but all of those positions we brought in-house. Um, the, our sister cities, except for the brand new ones, it tends to not be what's getting contract out. The finance administrative ones are the ones that you hire. Parks, we are leaving as-is. All the contracted positions are staying the same. The year-over-year change is fourteen percent. And again, one of the things to point out is that the bids were currently under our, were awarded in twenty twenty at the very beginning of the pandemic. And we knew back then the city had locked in very favorable rates over that time. The last one I'd like to talk about here, as far as major contracts, except for GIS's public works. Um, this is one of those that again, engineering positions, we will probably contract out most of those. We also have five fractional positions. In other words, positions that we share with other cities. It makes it more attractive to the bidders. If we brought in the five in-house, we're only bidding five partial positions. It kind of works better this way. We're happy with it. This is one of the higher, this is the highest of the escalators between twenty twenty or the twenty twenty-five year and twenty twenty-six year, and it's at seventeen point nine percent. Uh, one thing to note, this is the only thing where we're adding in a position we don't have. It's a halftime utility coordinator. It's one of those that we've, we're, we tend to do it on the side or contract here and there, but it's one of those that we find value within speeding up projects. The last one here is technology. We've brought in all the IT positions in-house. But what this does is it takes what we currently have through a positionally based GIS services contract with a point-two percent manager shared with another ci, shared with two other cities and two full-time contracted workers. What we're going to change it to is an in-house city GIS manager who will manage a GIS contract that is going to be put out to bid in the next few weeks. I think it should be in the next few weeks. Um, the estimated cost that we've gotten from cities of about our size is a hundred and eight thousand dollars on that. So it would limit the year-over-year increase to an estimated three, three point nine percent. And with that, I'll take any questions.
I guess I was looking at the GIS in the sense of we're going from point two of a manager to a full manager. We, right now we have two staff members. We're going to contract out for those two.
Correct. I, I tend to say it this way. We're buying a services contract where most of their work can be done off-site or remote or even, as I always say, in Kentucky in some cases.
Right.
And that manager is better served being here full-time, helping both public works and police and community development with it and managing a contract where they can kind of work. We need this here or that there.
All right. Yeah, from a manager of GIS, from a police perspective, there's just numerous things that we touch GIS. It's just not construction. So yeah, I understand that. Um, thank you for, uh, giving me the information. I'll move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Second by Stacy. Uh, any questions? Go ahead, Joe.
Uh, Jay or Eric, I'd like to have a sidebar conversation. I'm reading the job description for the executive assistant to the city manager. And in the summary, it discusses executives, this is the mayor, city council and city manager. And can we hone that and re-clarify the role, relationship with and, and the assistance potentially that this, this role can serve as needed potentially to the council during the month?
Right. The goal, yes, I'll be glad to answer that question. The goal for that position is to modify the way it's currently structured. And where it would serve, i- it is considered the assistant, measured assistant for the city manager's office, but also supports the mayor. And also our goal under the new contract, we do, it would help support the city council members as well. And if there's a special project or some, uh, research that y'all need or something you need assistance with, this position would do that. The other piece that we're going to do is just to, uh, go to more of a clearer aspect of the job would be that it integrates with the front desk position during the lunch schedules and some other schedules there. So in other words, it's an automatic between those two positions because historically the way the contract was written, um, it fell under the administrative services contract. And so it was a, who would fill those other positions during lunchtime was more random. This will refine that better. It'll give more assistance to y'all as a council and that's the way we have it written right now.
I mean, I know the limits and boundaries and it's usually everything goes through you and then you disperse the work to the staff and then we bubble up and work, work on it through there. So not for this meeting, but if you can work on a clarification of that and communication back out to the council on, on how that interaction might proceed and things they might be able to help with and things. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Uh, go ahead, Catherine.
You had us, you sent us the contracts to read, so I looked at those. It says required to walk in the job descriptions. I wonder if that is discriminatory.
Uh, I will actually defer to HR on that.
I don't know.
Um, and there are, I'm, I'm going to defer it. I don't ever like to talk outside of my wheelhouse on that.
They're here. They're here.
They are. Oh, they are. You've, you've been waiting for this moment, haven't you?
We can.
I now introduce your HR director, Nicole Stojka.
It is not considered discriminatory, but if there's a certain position that you're questioning whether that's necessary, we can go back and take a look at it.
But I was looking at, uh, there were, it was on there for several. I just wonder.
Why?
If we, yeah, why?
Why is it on there? Like.
Right.
Why do they have to be able to walk?
Well, we can go back and, we can go back and review this. Would be glad to.
I mean, I'm not, I just, I missed it, but.
Right, what is that discriminatory on our part to ask? Because we don't need them to walk. We need them to move.
Hmm. I understand your question. We'll, we'll review it. There are certain positions that may be out in the field that somebody might be, need to be able to walk, climb, that sort of thing. But for the, the city hall position, we'll be glad to take a look at that.
Okay.
Are, are we, where are we? We have a motion, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so do we need, we just know that's going to get changed before I sign a contract? Okay. Uh, right. Right. Okay. All in favor of the motion on the, uh, floor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. The motion carries. Thank you. All right.
The last business item is approval of an MOU renewal contract with Claritell Health Mental Health Technician or Mental Health Technician Chief Carlson.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, the memorandum that I sent for you, those dates are correct. Uh, for some reason, this contract never made it before the council. Uh, this is for the contract for this year for our mental health clinician. This is going to come out of ARPA two funds for eighty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-six and seventy-one dollars.
Any questions?
Good. This is unfortunate that the contract is for January first and this is September.
Correct.
Eighth.
Right.
Yep. I would hope that we'd get it in a more timely manner in the future.
Yes, ma'am. Oh, I own that.
Um, approve.
Move by Stacy.
Second.
Second by Tom. Any further discussion? Um, seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Michael Smith, Sharon, your voice held up. That's barely right. Um, Michael Smith, to talk about curb ramp accessibility.
Yes, the, we, we, well, this, let me back up. The city council, uh, included a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in this year's budget for, to, um, upgrade sidewalk ramps. You know, this, uh, the slope down with the little detective bumps on the yellow pads uh, to meet ADA requirements. When we did our transition plan, we identified over seven hundred locations in the city that need to be upgraded for, uh, to meet ADA requirements. So, and then we also, uh, allocated fifty thousand from the state, um, DOT, Elmeg money that, extra money that we got this year. Uh, so a total of two hundred and ten thousand and we identified a number of ramps around the city to go ahead and replace this year and we issued a bid. We received eight quotes. Um, for the, originally, we, we weren't exactly sure how much it would cost, so we only put forty-seven ramps in there. And the cost came in, uh, under what we had estimated, so we, we've, we can add uh, up to another fifty ramps to this, but the, the lowest quote was from CGS for eighty-four thousand, three, twenty-three. And it, it's a unit, we asked for unit prices for each ramp and for each area of sidewalk we need to do. So it's scalable and we're recommending, um, awarding a contract to CGS for up to a hundred and ninety thousand to replace ramps throughout the city. And there's a map in the packet that shows where we're planning to do this.
Does the map show forty-seven or does the map show everywhere?
The map shows the forty-seven plus the, the additional up to fifty that we think we can do.
Okay. All right. Uh, go ahead, Rob.
Um, so I'm looking at the quotes and I, I'd, I'd like the, the cost of the, uh, lowest quote. But it is almost three hundred thousand dollars cheaper than the highest quote. Um, is there a reason that these are all over the place? I mean, is, is somebody on the top or the bottom not understanding the requirements properly? That's my concern is that the low bidder has missed something and.
Uh, we, we've met with the low bidder and gone over their quote and, um, they, they're comfortable with it. Uh, I mean, sometimes you get a range. Some contractors may already have a lot of work and they'll just put a number out there and say, well, if I get it for this, it'll be worth, worth my while. But, um, you know, we, I think, uh, you know, we've done a lot of work with Blunt Construction. They're in the hundred and seventeen range. So we feel like, um, that the three hundred number is just, you know, really not the true indicator of what this is going to cost.
And even for that, I mean, the, I mean, it's half the cost of, you know, even the next three highest. I mean, it's eighty-four versus one seventy-eight versus one sixty-eight versus one fifty-three. So it's, I mean, it, there's just, I've never, there's a lot of variations to just.
Yeah. Uh, CGS has done a little bit of work for us and the, you know, it is scalable. So, um, our direction to them is going to be not, they're not going to go out and start tearing up ninety locations around the city. We're going to have them work in air zones and finish that before they move to the next one. So, you know, if we run into any kind of issues, i- it's, it'll be easy to just say, okay, we're, we're going to go in a different direction.
Catherine.
Uh, a question about the bumps, just mechanically. They're to prevent icing.
No, they're, they're for visually impaired.
So do they need to be all over the ramp? My question is bikers, scooters, uh, skateboards, it's no fun to go over the bumps. And if it's just to, for somebody to see it visually, it's going to be on either side or, yeah.
The, the guidelines require it to be pretty much for the full width of the ramp. That, I mean, the brightness of them is so. That, I mean, the brightness of them is so somebody that's maybe partially impaired can still see it, but then the bumps are for somebody with a cane to, or even with their feet to be able to feel that they're about to walk into the road. So it, yeah, yeah, the guidelines require it to be for the full width.
Okay. Okay, uh, consent? Everybody pay that?
Uh, does it make sense to get the full amount to budget for, to do as many of them as possible?
Yes.
I mean.
Well, we left, we left it at one ninety because there is some management costs and there'll be some concrete testing costs, so um, I mean, we might be able to go a little above that, but we wanted to stay a little bit under for those other costs outside this contract.
Okay. And again, the testing, based on the low bidder, we, we always test our stuff, so, okay, that's fine. I'm, I want to make sure we do as much as we can.
And there, you know, this is something I got right a few years, like many years ago at this point, but I'll always hang my hat on it, um, when bids look funny, but they carry the, like the bond or whatever. Is this, or is it not high enough price project?
Um, they're not, they're not required by law to bond this.
Okay.
Um. And typically, because we will be doing it in batches, there, you know, a lot of times the bond is you get halfway through a building and somebody walks away, you have to have somebody to finish it. But with this.
Right.
There's not a lot of risk that they're going to have a lot of work undone that can't get finished.
Okay, and then if they decide after that they can't do it, you'll just start over and bring it back to us. I presume we won't. Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, consent, I think is fine. All right, public comments. I have two cards left from the last beginning public comment session. Dave Cohen, I saw him leave. Denny Shortle, I saw him leave. Would anyone, uh, uh, if you could grab a card quickly, write your name down. Um, you can fill out the re- you fill out the rest after, um. Uh, and just introduce yourself. Uh, you can hand it to the gentleman there. If you'll just intro- Sharon, you can keep it. If you'll just introduce yourself and you'll have three minutes, sir. Okay.
So, hi, my name is Guy Dela Justina. I am um, a resident here at Thousand at Perimeter, just next to the future State Farm redevelopment. Um, a few comments here. I've been coming to the city council meetings and to the planning commission meetings for about six months now. Fascinating stuff, to say the least. But a, a few things I want to share as a resident, right? First, echoing the comments from Council Harris about the level of of vitriol and hate that we saw on these meetings, both in the planning commission meetings. Uh, one of the planning commission uh members uh mentioned very similar comments to yours. Um, specifically about that one development about the affordable housing here. Um, I do have concerns with that, right, that, that that we cross lines that are very hard to, to go back, right? Today, I was even more concerned about the similar comments made um to the city staff. They're not elected officials, right? Richard leads a great team, does a great job. Madeline was crying out there. It's, it's heartbreaking. So I don't know if in the next time an affordable housing building will be proposed to the city, and the folks with the deny flags will come here again, and they'll be vitriolic against the city staff if anything can be done. Cut the microphone, hit the gavel, say, hey, listen, this is not what we're here for, right? It, it was very disheartening to see um comments against Paul and against Madeline today. Not appropriate, right? Especially if some of those folks then say, I care for this community, and immediately follow that with vitriolic commentary. Very, very sad to see. Um, thank you, all of you, for articulating the vision for Ashford Dunwoody. It is the gateway to our city. Um, the, one more fried chicken chain. It's, it's definitely not the best land use there. Um, it will come to you soon enough, as you know, eighty-four perimeter center east rezoning for that one as well with another restaurant that is also proposing an auto-drive-through. Um, and I think we can stick to that same vision. I do want to make comments about um Georgetown, so Chambly Dunwoody, not as sexy as Ashford Dunwoody as we know, but I think there's also a lot of potential there too. The pathway is beautiful. The Georgetown Park there, I have a toddler, I take them all the time there to that side, even though on this side here, hopefully at some point we'll be connecting both. Um, and then, just I guess, like in a, on another note of us for thinking about, I just heard recently that the Georgetown uh recreational center will be closing due to easement or whatever land use for the express lanes that, you know, are just also bad land use anyway. So hopefully there's something that can be done with that spot over there because of such a good piece of the community there. Um, that's it. Just want to thank you all for this. Um, it is the, the last thing, right?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Is there any additional public comment? Seeing none? Um, that was kind of, um, seeing none. Um, city manager comments?
Uh, no additional comments, Mayor, and we do not need an executive session.
Council comments? Go ahead, Joe.
For those left, um, Saturday morning, come on out to Brook Run. You mentioned this uh bike rodeo, but it's also a community bike ride. It'll start at ten AM from Brook Run on the multi-use path trail. Um, it's a community bike ride. Just go online and find it. Um, I'm also looking for volunteers to help with that. It's, there's a sign-up genius, but um, yeah, it'll be a lot of fun. It's over by the parking lot by the amphitheater um at, at ten, ten AM on Saturday, so hope to see you all there. Thanks.
Uh, go ahead, Rob.
Uh, I, especially in light of um Stacy's comment and uh, and the last public comment to it. And I think we're all kind of in agreement, and especially um the city staff gets um abused quite a lot. Um, it from time to time, and uh I really do appreciate, we do really have a very professional staff here. Um, and they really are trying to do the best job. Um, and so if there is anger, we're the people that.
Come to us, right.
We're the elected officials. I have a very thick skin. I'm happy to listen anytime and, and, you know, try to figure out uh how to make things better. Um, so anyway, I just, I wanted to, to jump on Stacy's comments about um, about that. Thank you.
Um. Yes. Yes, we are the people you should target with your frustration. What happened here tonight was inappropriate, and I think we'll look at, if possible, refining our rules. Um, I was really disappointed in some of the people that spoke about with direct insults. Um, that said, at our retreat, you know, we talked about how we were going to educate the community about Dunwoody, and I love Dunwoody one oh one, but it is not deep enough for what we need. We don't need an advanced of that. We need a land use academy one oh one. Um. We can, internally, y'all can talk about what that looks like, if it's a one-night class, or if it's a series of videos, or maybe it's both. But I think there's a lot of misunderstandings about zoning and land use, including the fact in Georgia, almost without exception, a landowner can appeal to the, if, if they're in one of the hundred and twenty counties and biz- hundreds of cities that have zoning and appeal to the local government to change the land use by right, not the land, the, the council has to approve it or the commission has to approve it, but they have the right to ask. And there is a prescribed process in Georgia law that we have to follow. There's, we don't get to say, and, and I want to point out for the two people that are here, and maybe Kathy will put it in the paper, that the staff recommended uh for us not to approve the oil change place on Shambly Dunwoody, and the applicant still chose to approve, uh, to apply. So that's the way it works in Georgia. I assume it works pretty similarly in a lot of states, other states, but when you own property in Georgia, we are a heavy property rights state. So that's something to keep in mind, but I would like to see us come up with a plan that we can implement uh in the next few months about offering that information to people. All right, and with that, I believe unless someone else has something to say, we need a motion to adjourn. Move to adjourn, second. All in favor? Nobody opposes. Um, that motion carries unanimously.